Alright, council, I'll call the September sixth, two thousand twenty-two West Richardson Council meeting to order at six P M. And before we get started, I'll ask Stephanie to view our high ground.
Alright, thank you. Tonight's meeting will be held in person with a virtual meeting component. If you are participating virtually, please make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video view is the name you would like the mayor to use. You can change this by right clicking on the three dots in the upper corner of your video view and clicking rename. Audience members present in the council chambers will be called upon first during public comment periods. Those participating remotely should virtually raise your hand if you wish to speak. To virtually raise your hand, click on participants and then click on raise hand. If you are participating by phone only, press asterisk nine to raise your hand. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Alright, roll call. Brent Gary.
Here.
Richard Bloom.
Here.
Fred Brink.
Here.
David Fettum.
Here.
May Hayes. Kate Moran. Present. John Smart.
Here.
And council member Stoker requested to be excused at our previous meeting.
And most to excuse council member Stoker and see someone second. Favor say aye.
Aye.
Both like sign, both carry. Thank you. And then, Councilman Fettle, would you please lead us in pledge of allegiance this evening?
Pleasure.
Thank you, council member. Counsel, the agenda is before you this evening. Councilmember Smart's asked to uphold the item six C resolution forty-one twenty-two about the park maintenance level service standards. And we'll go ahead and move that down to eight G. And then also staffs asked to remove items eight A and eight B from tonight's agenda as well. So with that, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Motion or second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both like sign, which carries. Thank you, council. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda this evening. Since we have no presentations, the consent agenda consists of approved minutes of the regular meeting. August sixteenth, the special meetings, August twenty-third and August thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Ordinance sixteen dash twenty-two designating no parking on cooperative way. Resolution forty-two twenty-two, setting the public hearing date to consider a petition for a frontage improvement waiver for arena road. Resolution forty-three twenty-two, a proclamation request, the daughters of American resolutions constitutionally. And a resolution forty-four twenty-two proclamation request, attendance matters. Motion to authorize amendment number one to waste water system plan. It's an engineering contract with J U B. Motion authorize the amendment of amendment number one to the sewer system plan. Also, an engineering services contract with J U B. And a motion to approve the O P Y settlement allocation agreement and participation agreement. Motion to confirm the mayor's appointment to the salary commission. Motion authorizing staff to submit a public works trust fund application for well number one replacement. And if there's anyone from the audience who'd like to speak to the consent agenda this evening, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. This is not public comment yet. We've got two of them coming up. This is just a consent agenda. Hang around for a while. Okay, is there anyone from virtually attending that would like to speak this evening? Please raise your virtual hand or star nine if you're by phone. And clerk will recognize you. See anyone, Stephanie? I do not.
I do not see anyone, though.
All in favor of the motion consent agenda this evening? May I have motion to approve the consent agenda this evening? I already did that one. My bad. Motion and a second is here. All in favor, say aye.
Mister Mayor, we still need a motion for that, for approval of the consent.
I have motion to approve the consent. We already did that.
Oh, move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Second, confusing me here. Now, the motion and the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
You're killing these noise. Okay, real good. So this is the, this is the time for our first citizen public comment. Opportunity for items that are not on agenda. If you'd like to address council, please come to the podium, state your name. And place a residence. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
Curtis Drive, you might give me my actual address or is I can?
Yeah, just that's fine. Just place a residence.
Okay. West Richardson, I also work for the fire department here in town. My wife works in school district, so we're vested in the community. I'm here this evening. We have some concerns crossing Keene Road in the morning. Nine months out of the year, there's a group of kids that go from Watkins Way across Keene Road on their way to school and then on the way home from school, they're doing the same thing. Countless mornings, there's drivers going by lock one on their phones, drinking their coffee, not paying attention to Keene Road. And I know Keene Road is gonna get bigger. I have three kids. Yeah, they go to school here. I have concerns in the future for people going to lock one up and down that road. My wife and I and everybody in our home side would not just a crosswalk, right? Get some lights on the side of the road, at least trying and get these drivers to pay attention to the kids that are crossing. I would hate to see somebody, a kid or family, anybody, get wrapped by a car. Because that is a, that's a really bad day for them. So I don't know if there's plans in the future with widening of Keene. And put a crosswalk in there, but I would really appreciate it. One at Watkins and one at Southside would be great, too. Thank you.
Anyone participating virtually this evening who would like to provide comment? Please raise your virtual hand or star nine. And Stephanie will recognize you. Stephanie, do you see anyone virtually this evening?
I do not.
We'll go ahead and move on to ordinances, resolutions, motions and public hearings. Item eight C is a public hearing amending the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-seven six-year transportation improvement program. And we have Public Works Director, Austin Slade, is participating virtually this evening. A little down in the weather there, so Roscoe, you present your staff report. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, got you. Go ahead.
So tonight, we're looking at amending our twenty-two six-year transportation improvement program. This was adopted back in two thousand twenty-one. We recently received some grant money for these, for two projects. And so by amending our twenty-two six-year tip, rather than waiting for the twenty-three tip to be done, we're able to obligate these funds for these two projects in November of this year, rather than waiting till February of next year. So basically, the two projects that we're looking to amend, again, it'll change the funding from planned to secured is the bombing range road, Keene Road intersection project. We secured a little over two point seven million dollars for Senator Franklin Council of Government, federal S T P, S T B G U L grant. And with some city match to that, we'll have the construction fully funded, be able to obligate November, put this in construction next year for that project. The other project is a pathway on Van Geesten from Keene Road sixty-second. We were successful in getting P E and right-of-way funds. And again, this amendment would allow us to obligate those funds in November of this year, instead of waiting till February for the twenty-three step to get approved by the D R T. So before you can amend it, you're required to have a public hearing and take public comments. So that's what we're doing tonight before we look at passing this resolution.
Thank you, Roscoe. I'll open the public hearing at six-ten. Anybody like to provide comments, this item on the agenda? Please come to the podium, state your name and residency for the record. We can go on here this evening. I think it sounds like you're not even. And anybody virtually this evening, please raise your hand or star nine. You recognize by the clerk. Saying, and to close the hearing at six-ten. And the resolution forty-five twenty-two amending the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-seven six-year transportation improvement plan. And now a motion, please.
I move to adopt resolution forty-five twenty-two, amending the city's twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-seven, six-year transportation improvement program to change funding for state route two twenty-four pathways project. And the bombing range and Keene Road intersection modification project from planned to secured to recognize recently awarded via code federal S T B G U L and T A P U L grants.
Motion and a second. Questions of Mister Slade, Councilmember Bloom?
Mister Slade, the, the normal paperwork doesn't seem to be in the package. Would it be with the resolution? Would normally, wouldn't that normally be attached to the resolution?
Stephanie, I'm getting all sorts of feedback. I can't hear Mister Bloom. I got static.
Let me try again. The, the normal updated chart or table that, that goes with the transportation improvement plan wasn't included in the package? Wouldn't that normally be attached to the resolution?
Still a lot of static on my end. Somebody's mic, there we go. So the other two, yeah, usually there's two pages.
Try again.
I, I caught you, but I was getting a lot of feedback. The, the two documents, yeah, they're one-page sheets. Typically include them. They should have been included, Richard. I don't know.
Well, I mean, I, I don't have a problem. I just want them to be attached to the resolution, so.
Yep, yep. We'll make sure that happens. So.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both like sign. Which carries unanimous. Thank you, council. Thank you, Roscoe. Resolution forty-six twenty-two. Eight E is a resolution amending the city's master fee schedule related to garbage rates. And I'll ask Finance Director Aaron Glenn to provide staff report to city.
Hey, thank you, Mayor Gary. Good evening, council. That's nonsense. The item before you is a resolution to amend the master fee schedule for solid waste service rates. In July, the city received a request from Ed's disposal to adjust the rates due to increased cost of operations specifically associated with fuel. Under section three point two point four of the solid waste agreement. Roscoe and I met with Ed's disposal to review the request. And during that meeting, it was discussed to bring a fuel adjustment along with the annual C P I before council at the same time, rather than a few weeks apart. This topic has been discussed two times with the finance committee. And so the first adjustment to rates would be a four point nine five percent increase beginning October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two to cut the additional operational costs for fuel. And the second adjustment is a five point nine five percent increase allowed by the contract in sections three point two point one. The five point nine five percent increase is derived from seventy percent of the consumer price index from June of twenty-two, which was eight point five percent, I believe. And that rate change would be on today's rates, not the rates that are going to be changed for October of twenty-two. And staff recommends passing the resolution and adjusting the rates.
Is there anyone from the audience who'd like to make comment on this item this evening? See no one in here. Anyone virtually who would like to make comment this evening? Stephanie, you see? That, council, may I have a motion, please?
I move to pass resolution forty-six twenty-two, amending schedule E of the master fee schedule.
Second.
Second, any questions? Aaron, this evening? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both like sign. Harry, thank you, council. Moving on to items eight F, an ordinance amending the city's two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two budget. Again, the Finance Director, Will, provides staff report to city.
Alright, thank you again. So this evening is the fifteenth budget amendment for the twenty-one, twenty-two biennial budget. There are four items in this amendment. The first item is in the general fund to appropriate funds in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to hire a parks operation supervisor beginning October of twenty-two. And that will take care of this year, and it will be in next year's budget when that is presented to you later on. This coincides with the Parks Operation and Maintenance Plan that has been discussed at previous council meetings. The second item is in regards to the bombing range road and Keene Road intersect intersection modification projects. There are two funds involved with this one. The first is in the general fund. Which this first part is to transfer forty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars from the general fund to fund three fifty-five. This is for a parcel of property that was purchased with federal funds in the mid-nineties as part of the Keene Road Railroad Right-of-Way number two project. This parcel is approximately seventeen point nine five acres and is not needed for roadway purposes due to the shift in direction on Keene Road. So this will make it so the general fund owns that seventeen plus acres, almost eighteen acres. The Washington State Department of Transportation has approved the process to move these funds to another title twenty-three eligible project, which is the bombing range road, Keene Road intersection modification. Also, within this fund three fifty-five for the same project is to appropriate an additional fifteen thousand dollars from the ending fund balance for additional staff time and the administrative settlement previously approved by council in a previous meeting. The third item is in the cumulative reserve fund oh oh two to appropriate four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars to buy back lot one of the Belmont Business District, District from the Keene West Holding LLC, which council approved the purchase and sale agreement on August thirtieth. The final item is to appropriate an additional hundred and nine thousand, five hundred dollars from ending fund balance in the fund four four two sewer system development fund for the amendment with contract with J U B for the sewer system comprehensive plan that was approved in the consent agenda just this evening. Staff recommends passing the attached ordinance to amend the twenty-one, twenty-two biennial budget. This amendment authorizes an increase in the twenty-one, twenty-two revenues in the amount of forty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars in appropriations and the amount of seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, twenty dollars, bringing the revised total expenditures for the twenty-one, twenty-two biennial to a hundred and twelve million, four hundred and fifty-five thousand, eighty-eight dollars. And a total revised budget to a hundred and thirty-five million, eight hundred and sixty thousand, ninety-nine, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
Thank you, Aaron. Is there anyone from the audience who'd like to speak to this agenda item this evening? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and residency for the record.
Seeing no one in house? Stephanie, anybody online, virtually, star nine, or raise your hand and Stephanie will recognize you.
Don't see anyone.
You, council, may I have a motion, please?
I move to pass ordinance seventeen twenty-two, amending the city of West Richardson's twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two biennial budget.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions for Aaron? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Both like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, council. And then resolution forty-one twenty-two, adopting park maintenance level service standards. As mentioned in the, in the meeting here, Councilmember Smart asked for the item to be moved off the consent agenda. And we have Mister Slade with us this evening, virtually. Above and beyond all of the different conversations that we've had in workshop settings, subcommittees and park board, is there anything else you'd like to add to this, this evening, Mister Slade?
Thank you, Mayor. So just to clarify, there was a question as far as what was being approved in the resolution. The whereas is just state facts. But the actual action is in section one, where council is adopting level of service for maintenance in all parks are basic and directing staff to begin implementing these plans. But in, well, in an appropriate and orderly manner, they're all subject to budgetary constraints, personal level and available equipment. So basically, you're setting a level of service standard for maintenance. But we can't implement it without budgetary, without funds being included in the budget. So that's what's before you.
Thank you, Roscoe. Is there anyone from the audience who'd like to speak to this agenda item this evening? If so, come to the podium, state your name, residency for the record. Seeing no one in house, anyone virtually like to speak to this agenda item this evening? Raise your virtual hand or star an eye. You recognize by the clerk. Stephanie, do you see anyone?
I do not.
No, I'm there. Can I have motion, council?
I move to pass resolution forty-one twenty-two, adopting the park operations, maintenance, level of service standard.
Second.
Have motion second. Councilman Smart, if you would, go ahead and lead off. What are the comments that you have to say?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so council and, and folks in the audience, the reason I wanted this taken off the consent agenda was because, although I understand the specificity of what Mister Slade is saying as far as our approval tonight is, is just to recommend a well, it's to approve a level of service, which we've discussed at length. What threw me off was under the recommendation, which is also something that we are giving a nod to with our approval of this motion. Under the recommendations, it all looks good to me. I'm sure you've all read it. But the last sentence and the first paragraph ends with let's see, begin, number four, begin implementation of a phased approach to creating a separate parks department by hiring parks operation supervisor in October twenty twenty-two. And I'll, I'll give a nod to that, as we just voted for approval of the budget for that. And that continues, say, with new park department created in two thousand twenty-seven. And I think that that may be jumping the gun a little bit to have that included in this motion. It may happen, it may not happen. We may have a parks department, we may have some other sort of organizational construct to supervise our parks workers. We may or may not have a new department head in two thousand twenty-seven. We may have a new department head in two thousand twenty-eight, or maybe we have one in two thousand twenty-six. Who knows? I just didn't like the specificity of that implied obligation, although I grant it, but by the letter of the law, it is just the recommendation section, it's not the actual motion. So my request is to just take that last seven words, including the date, off of this motion. And I would have no heartburn at that point.
Anyone else? Councilman?
It, it should be clear that what we're voting on is the resolution language itself, and that language, as I'm reading it, isn't in that creation of a parks department, just in that house.
It's in the whereabouts. It's, it is in there.
Mister Slade, do you have your hand up? Do you want to clarify?
Uh, yeah, Stephanie, we got feedback again. I think it's the podium mic. The, the whereas's are simply stating fact. So that is a fact, that that is the consultant recommendation, Public Works Department's recommendation, your community development department's recommendation, and your park subcommittee and park board recommendation that we do form the park, separate parks department by two thousand twenty-seven. So removing that language would alter what is, what is a fact, their recommendation. We're not asking council to approve that. We're simply moving in that direction. And that's what was discussed at the workshop. There's nothing in the resolution down below that authorizes any money to create that. That'll have to be future council budgets that will have to authorize funding for staff to form that department, to do deferred maintenance or work on the ADA plan. So taking out that whereas or amending it would not be factually correct. Strongly against it.
Thank you, Roscoe. Councilman Smart?
Uh, yeah, just to, just to clarify, so in, in the technical language where it says whereas, I'm just gonna go ahead and read in the paragraphs, everybody knows what it says. It says, Public Works and Community Development Staff, Park Board and Council Park Subcommittee have reviewed the operation and maintenance gap analysis report and associated consultant recommendations, and have the following consensus recommendation to the city council. Well, and then it goes on, point one, two, and, and three, and four, and point four. It says, new park department created in two thousand twenty-seven. So I don't know, I suppose if the, it, it, it says the city council has this consensus recommendation. Maybe it's just the subcommittee. Is that maybe the clarifying point? That's, that's, that's where I'm getting tripped up, is that I'm part of the city council and I don't recommend this as a course of action at this point in history. It may come up in the future.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both like sign, please. Mayor? Council, motion carried. We're gonna go ahead and move on to unfinished business, which we haven't done this evening, or new business. So this is the time for citizen public comment. Second time this evening. If you'd like to provide comment to council, please raise your virtual, excuse me, please come to the mic, state your name and residency for the record if you're in house here. And we'll, we'll speak with these people first, like, somebody. Anybody virtually this evening, star nine, or raise your virtual hand, you recognize by the clerk? Seeing no one. Stephanie, do you?
I do not see anyone, no.
We'll, we'll go ahead and move on to staff and council announcements, reports and comments. We have anybody from staff? Chief Grego, would you like to join us up front here?
Thanks, Mayor and council. I appreciate the time. So tonight, I want to discuss a couple of things. Number one, I would give you update. As you know, we are five positions down at the police department and have been for a while. There's been some efforts put into recruiting new candidates and stuff, and we have received seven inquiries by laterals at this point. Several applications have been applied or sent in. As well as we're working on the entry level list, and we currently just tested eleven candidates that may be also possible candidates. So the efforts that have been going on by the police department, the commanders and the, the team have really made a big difference. So hopefully we'll get some relief soon and get some people on the road to start covering down, you know, what the team is picking up right now, and they've done a fantastic job with that. Also, tonight I wanted to announce, or I wanted to make sure that I brought this to the public, that earlier last week, I gave a chief's letter of commendation to Stephanie, the city clerk, for her efforts in helping us move to our new police department. I wanted to just bring up a couple of points tonight. You can go back and read the whole Facebook post. That was the letter of commendation in the Facebook post, but um, it was September last year-ish that we started talking about the moving plan and there was a lot of moving parts with electronics and you could just imagine with all the systems that we have and all the security requirements by the government and everything else, that it just had to be done meticulously. Um, Stephanie was aware of these things because of her past job and, um, educated me along the way too as the captain at the time. You know, of what that requires. So tonight I just want to say thank you, Stephanie. Also on top of that, as you guys well know, because you approved it. We went to body worn cameras last year, um, because the law changes and stuff. And she was definitely the element that made everything run smooth for us there, working with outside agencies and connections that we have in the region that thank goodness we're already doing it. So we weren't trying to recreate the wheel because it would have taken us a very long time. But Stephanie has, uh, been the vital piece that the transition for that at the same time was smooth as well as moving into our new building. You guys saw that happen. You know how all the moving parts were involved. So tonight, Stephanie, I just want to say thank you. We really appreciate you and, and your efforts and it was an honor to give you that letter. So just want to let you know, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Stephanie, thank you. I appreciate everything you do, you know, sell the dog. A lot of work keep always. Keep it going the same direction and that sounds great, I love it. Thanks, man. I see, uh, Roscoe, you have your hand up, see?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, there was a gentleman that spoke about crossing Keen Road or kids to access school. I did not catch which school we're talking about. Are they crossing Keen Road at Watkins to get to, uh, Wiley Elementary? Or is this to access Libby Middle School? I, I can't tell the gentleman there if you caught that.
Both.
Okay, uh, I'll, uh, check into that with the Richland School District. My understanding, uh, because I live in Glenbrook, uh, kids that go to Wiley, uh, the route, you don't have a walking route from the south side of Keen to Wiley. And when my kids went there, we had to sign an agreement with the school district that we wouldn't let them cross Keen Road. So I don't know if things have changed or if Richland School District exchanged their safe routes to school, but there should be no kids on the south side walking to Wiley. Uh, in regards to Libby, uh, we partnered with the school district and established a route to Libby Middle School that goes through the neighborhoods of Glenbrook and, uh, Riverwood and actually partnered with the installation of a hundred fifty thousand dollar pathway that cuts along the south, south side of our municipal services facility to Libby to keep those kids on the south side of Keen Road from walking or trying to cross Keen Road. So again, I'll check with the school district on those routes that have already been established and, and check into that. Uh, as we widen Keen Road, we're in the process of designing that in-house to four lanes. Those are some of the things we're looking at. But where we establish crossings, we rely on the school district's safe routes to school, routes. Um, not where people try to cross, try to prohibit or that's a bad spot to block crossing that T intersection. So again, we'll, I'll follow up with the Richland School District and see where they're at if they have implemented those plans.
Hey, thank you. And with that, I'll ask also that, uh, when, when you, uh, have those conversations, if you could ask the Richland School District to post the safe route to school on their site, we will also share that on our site, uh, and then ask for you to report back the next council meeting of your findings in regards to that conversation. I believe that was Dr. Schulte when we first set up those safe routes to school. Uh, so that there might be something's dropped in the new administration. Thank you, Roscoe, for looking into that. Thank you, sir, for your comments. Much appreciated. Uh, our children's safety is certainly paramount, number one in my mind, well as everybody else here. So we can work together and then get, make sure that we have an understanding of the solution to make it a safer way to school. Appreciate it. Thank you, Roscoe. Anyone else this evening from staff? Counsel? Councilmember Bloom?
Um, yes, I attended, um, the Yakima Nation Salmon Recovery Event at Bateman Island last week. Um, it was kind of, they got offered up, uh, barbecue salmon and barbecue, uh, corn. Uh, the they highlight a lot of the efforts that the Akuma Nation has done to improve fish hatcheries and, and, um, also, uh, the other tribal nations have, uh, really helped on, on improving fish, um, proliferation in both the snake and the Yakima River. Um, unfortunately, the, the focus is on the Bateman Island Causeway, which was, uh, sometime in the thirties, it was, it appeared according to satellite imagery. Um, or not satellite, aerial, satellites in the thirties. Um, but, uh, it causes a tremendous amount of, uh, backwater at the mouth of Yakima and prohibits the cooler Columbia River water from flushing out that backwater, which keeps the fish from going back up. And so, uh, working with the Corps of Engineers, the Corps of Engineers have done a study and are planning on removing at least part of it. Uh, the Akuma Nation's asking them to remove all of it. Uh, what this will mean is the access of Bateman Island is not going to be by foot. Um, at least for now, unless somebody comes up with the money to build a bridge to get out there. Um, and, uh, there's concern for that boat, boat, uh, marina that's a little bit downstream from Bateman Island. Uh, especially since they would expect some ice floes and things of that nature that, that might be moving. Um, but, you know, lease is expired, so I'm not quite sure where they stand. Um, anyway, uh, but I just want to highlight that you'll be seeing more in the news, uh, but it's moving ahead and, uh, uh, there is significant consensus of like dams that that bridge is going to go away. So, just want you to know.
Councilmember Fettow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I received a couple of emails, uh, shortly prior to our council meeting. Um, I hope those two citizens would have made comments tonight, but I just wanted to say, um, that one, I, I took what they had said to heart. Uh, it was concerning the appointment of, of Rich Beal to the Salary Commission. Um, I've known Rich Beal for, I guess, about five years. In my time on council, I found him to be fair, honest, forthcoming. Um, I can't remember exactly the topic, but I can remember at least on one, uh, situation that he actually accused, accused himself from a, a vote over a conflict of, of something on here, but, um, I just want to let those, those citizens know that I, I read their comments, I understand them. But the citizens of the city voted him five times to counsel, uh, serve twenty years here on this board and and I think they have spoken that they believe him to be fair and just. Someone else, thank you.
Sure. Um, thank you. I first would also like to echo the thoughts that council member that I was saying. Um, again, thanking the citizens that submitted the comments and email. Uh, hopefully we're able to continue to get comments and preferably comments actually during council meetings even better, or if emails mention that they are requesting them to be considered public comments and be read in during public comment. Um, that way they're read during council meetings. Um, along with that, I would like to mention that I have checked on the website. I don't know if others have to see where vacancies are on boards. It is a bit difficult to see that. Uh, I'm sure that that is unintentional. But the last time I had checked, I noticed that there was still an opening on the Planning Commission and one opening on the Parks Board, if I remember correctly. So hopefully we could maybe put those openings up so that uh, there is a larger number of people aware that those are openings so that it might not seem as if only insiders are aware of these openings. Um, and, uh, other than that, thank you for mentioning the crosswalks. That is something that I have been talking to Roscoe and whispering in his ear every time you mentioned Keen. So thank you again. I know that I've had many people talk to me about the difficulties of crossing Keen, even though it's not for school purposes, even if it's just visiting neighbors or friends that are just across Keen. It is extremely difficult and dangerous to cross Keen unless you are crossing directly at Belmont or at bombing range. Now, the four-way signal will make it easier at bombing range, I'm sure, but there has, there should be something in between the two streets to make it not quite as much of a walk or bike ride to get to those in order to cross Keen. So thank you very much for those comments as well.
Dave?
Yes, I just wanted to bring up on this, um, in the city, um, our first event that's coming up is Harvest Festival, which is this Saturday, the tenth. Um, and it goes from ten to two at Flat Top Park. We have, it's a free event for the public. Um, we have a lot of vendors there that are going to be doing children activities and a whole variety of things. We have the fire district, um, number four, they're going to be doing a fundraiser for, um, hamburgers, hot dogs. So, um, you can get your lunch there for you and your family and attend the event and, and it's free to the public. So I encourage everybody to come out. Um, see what's going on and it's all possible due to the Red Mountain Lions Club here in town that, um, puts on that event now. So encourage everybody to come out to that. And the next event, which is, uh, an amazing event that's coming up is time of remembrance, which is a tribute to our fallen soldiers from Iraq, Iraq and Afghanistan. And it goes, um, September twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. We have had the honor, um, through the years, um, for the city of West Richland and for the West Richland Chamber to hold the master ceremony on the twenty-fifth. Um, we get a lot of people involved. We get the fire district involved, bringing the big flag out, all the trucks, the police are very involved with that. And, um, and then naturally we always ask our mayor um, on the twenty-fifth to come out and say words, um, on how the city of West Richland stands behind all of our veterans, veterans. So, um, and a really touching part of this, um, this has been going on sixteen years. And it's been fabulous. It's helped so many families heal through the process of losing a loved one. Um, because what the whole purpose of this is to bring families from all over the state. We're the only place in the state of Washington that does the time of remembrance. And then we also have families from Idaho, Oregon, Montana, because they know about ours and their state doesn't do it. They come to our state. And, um, we work with the families. We're bringing counselors for the moms, the dads, the children, the teenagers, um, to work through this process with them. So on the twenty-fourth, um, that part's not open to the public, but on, on the twenty-fourth, Saturday night, we have a candlelight visual that's down at Columbia Park at the Veterans Memorial. Um, and that starts at seven thirty. And so we have a whole escort of, um, veterans, the Combat Bets International and the American Legion, all of them lead in the families to this ceremony. It's open to the public. Um, we have speakers and we have music and and if you've never attended, it's worth your time to attend. And what it does for these families is that part, and then on Sunday shows them that they come to a town they don't even know, and we welcome them with open arms. So I encourage everybody to come to that. And then, um, at ten thirty in the morning on Sunday morning, we, we host the master ceremony. And that is where we have speakers and our, our main speaker this year, which is a pleasure to have him again with us, is, um, General Mattis will be the main speaker, um, for this. And, and it's just, it's very moving and it means the world to these families that have lost loved ones. Um, I mean, encourage all of council, the mayor, everybody to attend to show these families across, um, three states that we care. And we thank them and so, um, and then afterwards we do a, um, we have all the combat beds, all of the, we cir, we kind of circle the whole park with motorcycles, all the veterans that are there to support, um, the families. And then afterwards we feed them lunch before they head home to whatever their destination is. So, um, it's going to be very moving and this, we're sad to say, but this is the last year that time remembers will be happening. Um, unless somebody else steps up to take it over, um, in the future. But I encourage the public to come out. Uh, it means the world to these people that have lost loved ones. And then thinking ahead, um, November fifth, we have the Veterans Day Parade. We work closely with our police and the city maintenance on getting the road closure, all that. Um, we're expecting a big crowd this year. And, um, so it's just one of those events that I encourage all of council, because you get to riding the Mustang and wave. Uh, you come out in port, it's all about veterans. Very huge veteran supporters in the city of West Richland were known for that. And I'd like to see that tradition continue through the years. So that's going to be November, um, fifth at nine thirty. That starts and goes down um, Van Geesten to thirty-eight. So, and then the Combat Bets International put on a chili feed afterwards. And usually the, the antique, um, trucks and army trucks and everything come up onto the park. So it's a great event for kids and for the public. So whoops, encourage you all to attend all these events. I'm just very proud to be, um, part of West Richland and everything we're able to do with all these events and bring people to our town to, to show, show off West Richland. And I'm very proud of our town. So, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Smart?
Uh, yeah, just a quick comment. I too received the two emails, um, a little bit too late to act on them, um, concerning the appointment, uh, to our salary commission. So I, I, I understand that concern and I, I kind of, um, I agree with the previous statements that council has made uh, concerning those concerns. Uh, but what I would add to it is that maybe, uh, what we should ask for is um, some type of, uh, maybe it's already happened in the past, but some sort of, uh, short written report, you know, a one pager that explains the actions of the salary commission and not just declares results. So whether the salaries go up or down, um, there should be some brief justification to the public. Uh, so that they just, uh, you know, eliminate any suspicions or concerns. And I think that would be an easy way to to show folks that this is a fair way to determine compensation for your mayor and council members. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Mayor Proton, bring?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of announcements. Um, I did attend the Desert Sky Elementary School ribbon cutting with the mayor. Uh, was a great event on, uh, August twenty-ninth. Also, I attended the most recent Law and Justice Council meeting. As I mentioned earlier, the Law and Justice Council is, is meeting regularly to discuss the, uh, public safety sales tax, which is due to expire uh, in a little more than a year plus. Um, that is a public meeting. It is held on the last Wednesday of every month at the Benton County Courthouse Building. Uh, the public is invited to attend. Next meeting will be, uh, September twenty-eighth. It is at noon. Uh, but I just want to make sure the public's aware if they'd like to hear some of the discussion taking place. Um, as for vacancies here in the city, we also do have a vacancy on the Salary Commission, uh, even with the appointment of Mr. Beal this evening. And, um, not to reiterate what several council members have already said, but I have full faith, trust and confidence that Mr. Beal can make fair and impartial decisions with regard to appropriate compensation for council and the mayor. And lastly, uh, I would just point out, I thank Mr. Preml for coming forward today to talk about safety at crosswalks. I received an email which I forwarded on to city staff, uh, from another citizen, uh, this week with regard to the crossing at Keen and Kennedy and, uh, traffic encounters, near encounters that they have, uh, had with vehicles. So I appreciate the city taking a diligent look at our intersections to try to make sure they're safe as possible. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And with, uh, with that, I'm going to ask Roscoe to jump back on here, if you would, please. I've been following the emails string in regards to that. Uh, the email that you shared with us and some of the conversations that Roscoe's been having with the city of Uh the email that you shared with us and some of the conversations that Roscoe's been having with the city of Richland. And uh some of the new things that they're they're working through, so. Uh could you share with us, please, just the, I know it's early in the conversation and where you're at with that, Roscoe, but just give council heads up into that discussion, please?
Well, the mayor, so yeah, at the uh Keen and Kennedy intersection, this would be traffic that's heading north on Kennedy. And wanting to make a right turn at Keen to head towards Richland. And pedestrians that are crossing there, there's not a lot of pedestrian crossing. But at these times, what the citizen is stating is people are so concerned at looking what traffic that's coming from West Richardson towards Richland, the uh. Uh eastbound traffic that they're not even looking for pedestrians there, so. Uh I've got the city engineer looking at it, she referenced some things that are on Richland signals. Um I don't know if it's signage, uh they do have some uh. Capabilities in their signals to delay. Uh green lights, uh lets the crosswalk go first, so people can get a couple of steps out in there, so they're seen before the light turns green. But some of these may be turning on red and still not seeing the pedestrians, and the other thing is, I'm working with the chief on uh. On uh they reported that they discussed this issue with an officer, so we're trying to get more information from the police department on. On any other issues uh besides this one, so we'll report back and we'll get some more information there and uh count. Mayor Pro Tim Brink, thanks for following up with that.
Thank you, Roscoe, for that explanation and and I appreciate you jumping on it as as quick as you did once you received that uh that concern. From uh Mayor Pro Tim Brink and the citizen. Uh it always shows that uh safety is, again, as I said before, certainly a priority and. We take it very serious and act immediately when it comes to anything health, safety related in the city of West Richland. So Chief, thank you for working with staff on that, and then the West person for the Richland PD and then hopefully we'll have some more. Report in regards to that. Uh Mayor Pro Tim Brink, thank you for uh taking the responsibility of Law and Justice, it's very important with the public safety sales tax coming uh. Coming up for a renew, we need to make sure that uh that that is successful. Uh directly impacts three officers that so are supported by the public safety sales tax here in the city of West Richland. And and many more officers throughout our region. Uh so the uh the education and the knowledge of what the public safety sales tax does is is very important and and hopefully we'll be able to. Share with our citizenry throughout the region of of that importance and what it what it does for health and safety of our of our communities. Um so thank you very much for uh doing doing that for me, and yes, it was a a great event at the ribbon cutting to. See all the kiddos out there getting excited about school and the the school now has, it was kind of the orphan orphan school in between remodels for a while. Now it's got its official name and it's got it's it's its own students, so it's a always exciting time when you see kids get back to school. Uh so as 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 everybody was traveling, do pay attention, we have the little ones are out there and sometimes uh. Their judgment isn't isn't as good as what it should be, and hopefully the the adults behind the wheels judgment is is exactly the opposite of that. And take care and watch out for them. Uh with that, we will go ahead and adjourn our meeting this evening at six fifty three, thank you.